Good evening. We'll call to order the city commission meeting for El Dorado on November 6th, 2017. First item on our agenda was roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Present.
Commissioner Locke?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badwick?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Alright, thank you. Invocation be led by Mr. Mark Somerville from Family Worship Center.
Let's all put our hearts together in prayer. Tonight, Lord, we come to you with humble hearts coming before you tonight, thinking of the things that are going on in our world today, and asking you to comfort and strengthen our nation, to guide our nation during these troubled times. We want to thank you tonight for the men and women that are actively involved in our military tonight, that are serving our country around the world. Continue to protect them, continue to keep your hand upon them. Thank you for the men and women that we're honoring this week, that are veterans who have served our country. We pray that this will be a week of good memories, we pray, Father. Tonight, as this city council comes together, again, we ask you to give wisdom and guidance to our leaders, we pray. Thank you for this council, we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join me in invocation, excuse me, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. Moving on with our agenda, we're at Proclaimations, and our none. Personal appearances, Main Street. Is there anyone, seen anybody here to give a?
How about Parkman, am I probably going to?
Well, we'll move on if somebody shows up, we'll come back to it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Alright. Public comment, anybody from the public wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move to item eight, nine, and 10 of the consent agenda. Minutes, appropriation and board appointments. Anybody who's sent out to you, we also discussed this a little bit at our work session, so are there any specific questions or comments from the commission on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll move on to new business, item 12 on our agenda, not having any old business tonight. First thing on this would be a discussion about bad debt fees. We talked about this a little bit at work session last week, too. Is there any new information, or Tabitha or David share with us what we're going to talk about tonight?
No new information. We brought this to the work session last week. We would like to begin including a 25% collection fee on all bad debt, and so right now, we can't add it on when we send it without an ordinance, and so this would allow us to add that 25% on to all of that bad debt that we send to collection agencies, to set off places like that, and that would allow us to recoup some of those costs that right now we're absorbing as part of the debt we collect, so.
And this primarily would recover our costs for collection agencies, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any further questions or comments from the commission? Everybody's okay adding collection costs to those who aren't paying? Let entertain a motion.
Okay, there are actually going to be three motions if we look at your agenda item, because the way our code is written, the refuse, water, and sewer are separate portions of municipal code, and so you'll have to make three motions for three separate ordinances.
Alright, you have a number?
The first number is G1266.
Are they in order?
Yes.
66, 67, 68?
Yes.
I move to approve ordinance number G1266, an ordinance amending title 13.08 of the El Dorado Municipal Code relating to administrative charges associated with collecting bad debt.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved in second, any further comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Okay, need another motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1267, an ordinance amending title 13.20 of the El Dorado Municipal Code relating to administrative charges associated with collecting bad debt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comments on this motion? Roll call.
Commissioner Badwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Need a motion for, need a third motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1268, an ordinance amending title 8.04 of the El Dorado Municipal Code relating to administrative charges associated with collecting bad debt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badwick?
Yes.
Our motions carry. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be recycling. We had a presentation in our work session, and I think see some strains and changes in our recycling program, that we want to have this presentation publicly. Brad is here to talk about that, give us some information.
So, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the changes that are, that we're currently facing with our current residential curbside recycling program in the city. We switched to single-stream curbside, which means you put everything in one container and placed at the curb on your normal trash collection day in 2014. Shortly after, that was done because we were seeing trouble in the foreign markets and getting rid of material market pricing. Years prior to that, we had sorted all of our material into each individual item and then sold it by the truckloads out of the recycling center to brokers. As the foreign markets began to have trouble being able to ship to those, we switched as many cities, most all cities, to the single-stream recycling way of doing it. We contracted with a month-to-month with a company called Town and Country out of Harrisonville, Missouri, who was bought out in 2015 by one of the big waste giants, Waste Corp. America. We were at one point in 2014 being paid for material, but when Waste Corp. took over, they opted to start charging us $15 a ton to process that. Most recently, we were notified a couple weeks ago that through the end of October this year, our price was going from 15 to 20, and then beginning November 1st, it would be $55 a ton to process that material, and that includes freight to get it there, which is about $5 a ton to get it there. So, not being able to move the material domestically and relying solely on foreign markets, which, again, most cities and most folks doing this or in this business are doing that, it has been a big problem for us, and it's starting to be a financial, where it's going to be a financial problem for us. So just very quickly, how our, how our cost breakdown to do what we're doing today, takes two employees, on the average, about 45 minutes to prepare one bale. That's from the time it's dumped out of the truck until the time it exits the baler, is weighed and tagged, and then put up for freight. Equates out to about an hour and a half per employee, for both employees, making it about $56 a ton to process that. As of today, we're at $111.59 a ton at the $55 per ton to get rid of it at WCA. As a comparison, Butler County landfill, the tipping fee for us is about $32 a ton. If the program were to continue, it would, it would probably cost an additional $2 to $3 a month just to cover the costs of the curbside recycling itself, not other programs, just the curbside recycling itself. So, in no particular order, we have some options, some things that we want some, we want some help deciding. Number one would be, and again, in no particular order, continue the program without a dedicated source of revenue, but with substantial charge, changes in service delivery. Some of that, that could be going back to a drop-off site, but still, there's no, no funding source to get rid of the material, to pay for the material even at that point. There's no identified source of revenue for that. Incorporate the recycling fee into your monthly trash bill. We estimate between $2 and $3, again, not knowing what kind of participation. We average about 500 tons a month, or 500 tons a year, not including revenues, but now there will be a cost to, a much larger cost to get rid of it, to be able to sell it off, to move it on down the line. Or to discontinue the recycling program as a whole and haul the waste to the landfill. So, there may be some other options with that, that would allow us to look at some other service-based things, such as bulky item pickup or a green waste collection. We've had, we have lots of conversations throughout the year about those two programs, and there's been some interest from the citizens to do that, so. So what we think our next steps are, is to distribute a short survey, and by short, I mean it's five questions or less, it's on a postcard, and it's to basically gauge the interest of our citizens. When we did our survey in 2013, 12, 13, no, in 2009, when we implemented automated trash collection, we got back a large number of surveys, which made it really easy for us to tweak the program and make it what people wanted to, wanted us to do, which we did. We anticipate that we're going to mail these out at a self-addressed stamp, postcard that you would return, you put it back in your mailbox, you could drop it off at City Hall, or you could bring it by the Public Works Department. And then once we get that information back, bringing the information gathered back to the commission to hopefully allow you all to make an informed decision about what, what your constituents want, what they're willing to pay for or not pay for, as the case may be. So, I think that's it. I'll answer any questions you may have. That was right.
One question that I have is, again, thanks for your efforts putting this together. And I think this is a, this is a decision that we need to spend some time doing, and also get some public input, so I appreciate the effort and the attention towards going towards surveying, whether it's, whether it ends up being Town Hall, or even Facebook Town Hall, or however we can reach our citizens as much as possible to know for input on our next steps. But one question I have, I was looking through my notes, somehow I wrote down that we were, we were, I'm going to use the word subsidizing, 50, I mean, as of October, we were 50% subsidizing this program, if I remember my notes right from our work.
That is, that's, that's correct for this year.
For this year, and then that, and then moving to this $55, obviously that took it off the charts. Your $2 to $3 proposal there, does that remove that 50%, or does that just get us back down to the, where we were before this increase started?
So, what we anticipate is that the $2 to $3, and again, it's, we're not set in stone, but we anticipate that'll cover the actual, the actual cost for the collect, for the collection of curbside material, not for the recycling operations as a whole, not for everything that comes out of the recycling center down there. That's a separate department in the enterprise fund under sanitation. So there's, there's two separate ones, there's sanitation and there's recycle. That averages about $240, $50,000 a year. This year, I think we'll be right around the 200 mark. So if you want to, if you want to see what it would cost to subsidize the whole program to offset those costs totally, I think you'd be, you'd be right at four bucks a month in addition to what you're paying right now.
Well, and that, and that's kind of where, as we, as I think about our discussion last Wednesday, that's what plays in my mind, is why would we, as an enterprise fund, why would we not be talking about a number that makes it that enterprise fund, where it pays for itself, rather than, because I don't know where, where we're robbing Peter to pay Paul when we say we're, I'm using the word subsidize, so get, correct me if I'm wrong.
I like the robbing part.
So we've taken that, so is that, is that coming out of the refuse side? I mean, what's?
Refuses has always subsidized recycling.
Okay.
Recycling has not.
So I think if we're going to have this conversation, we really ought to be having it in terms of what makes recycling sustainable and self-sufficient. If we're going to talk about increases, even if whatever, I mean, look alike, to me, that's the only way to really be talking about it. To subsidize enough to just get it back to some level of, to increase enough that just gets us back to some other level of subsidizing is not sustainable.
Not make money, just revenue neutral.
Right, revenue neutral, which is what enterprise funds generally are intended to be, revenue neutral plus.
We run the department like we would run a business.
Right.
Because that's exactly, that's exactly what it is. So, I did some quick numbers before I came over this evening. I imagine you'll be between the $4 and $5 range to totally offset all of the costs for recycling as, as the department as a whole. That being said, when, on Wednesday, when I showed you some other comparable numbers for other cities, and you saw some $18 and $19 costs per month, they have already done that.
Right.
That's already in their $18, $19 a ton, or in some cases, 23, where they may have been going to a transfer station and not a landfill.
And we're at 14 and change for?
1475 as of January 1.
Okay.
First seen on the February bill.
And in that 1475 is some level of recycle cost, right?
Negative, no, sir. Never has been.
So where, where has the $200,000 that's the recycle program in the enterprise fund scheme of things? Where's that always been? Has it always just come out of refuse?
It's always come out of sanitation. They want a sanitation to always pay for that.
So, you are correct, the 1475 pays for recycling.
Right.
But there's not a dedicated amount of that 1475 that goes to it. It basically comes out of the cash balance of that.
Yeah, and I guess that's, that's where I got confused. I thought maybe there might be, since you talked about two separate enterprise funds that were.
They're all in one enterprise fund, they're separate departments within the one.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So the average trash bill would be 1875, adding the $4 to it?
As of, as of now?
Yeah, if I was going to rough, if I, it was going to be a rough guess, yes.
When we get to the point where we're sending out surveys, are we going to know those numbers to a closer margin?
So, on the survey, we've, we've left a spot on there that first off asks, are you willing to pay? Are you willing to pay an additional fee each month for recycling?
There's a range.
And, I'm sorry.
There's a range.
And then the next question is, if so, zero to one, two to three, three to four, on so on. And so it gives people the option to say, yes, I'd pay $6 a month, or $5 a month, or $3 a month, whatever it would be.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I mean, it kind of finds a threshold of pain. However, our citizens, I mean, thinking about this as one of the business operations of municipality, and our citizens as shareholders, do we want to ask them if you want to continue to lose money in this deal? I mean, that's what, if you put a range and they pick, well, yeah, I'd pick $2, or I'd pick zero if I had a range to choose from, but that doesn't fix the problem.
Sure.
I guess if we're going to pull, I don't mind doing that, I mean, but I think we want to, I think we want to be pretty careful about how we pose information and ask questions.
I guess I would, I would only, I would only encourage you to be careful about putting down a price, because I'm not, I can't stand in front of you today and tell you that I feel good about the $55 a ton not being 75 sometime next year.
Well, that leaves right, yeah, and that's right where I was going, because, because.
And I look at it, if, if they, the majority come back and they say, yeah, we'd be willing to pay $2, well, that, to me, that kind of makes it a pretty easy decision. We can't do it for $2.
And that's why we kind of gave, that's why we gave them a range down below, to, I mean, I guess I like that analogy. You find their pain threshold.
Right.
You understand what people are willing, because you will have people in town, I promise you, that would pay $10 a month to keep doing it. You have people that said, if it's going to cost me 50 cents more, I'm not going to do it. So you have, you have constituents on both ends of that spectrum. We've heard it many, many times before. You need to keep this program going at all costs to, we don't need it anymore.
Right.
So, I just would be very cautious about coming out and saying that it's going to be 1875 with that, because I just, I couldn't, I couldn't stand here and say for sure that that price from the, those waste giants aren't going to go up.
No, but if you give, to me, if you give them a range, and we know before it goes up anymore at all, that we can't do it for that.
Right.
To me, that, that's the.
That was kind of our, my, my thinking in making the check a box.
Okay.
Just human nature is going to check the cheapest one.
Well, sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at.
So is that really giving us the information we want?
I think, I think anybody who's not, who doesn't spend the time to be completely informed about the issue is going to say, well, they must be able to do it for $2, or they wouldn't have put it on there.
Well, right. There's, there's $6 on there, too, so we went as high as six.
Yeah.
So we could try to.
Nobody's going to mark that one for us.
Well, and, but, but, but to be careful, $2 means you can do it, $6 you do it with a new truck. I mean, that's kind of.
That's how I would look at it. Well, but again, that's something, that's something that in that, in that grand scheme of things, you will have equipment, you will have to replace that truck at some point, so you do have to think about that, and.
Right, that's.
That's what we do right now. That was, that's how that enterprise fund works.
That's how they work, and, and, and that's, all good, all good discussion. So are we going to be, is this commission going to see that survey before it goes out, or may we see it before it goes out? Anybody interested in seeing it before it goes out?
I'd be curious.
I, I would like to have an idea what.
I mean, just, I'd like to see it before people start calling.
Right.
I think actually, if you want to.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I think I do.
Has it already gone to print?
No.
Take the one and two off of it.
Can you help see that?
Yeah.
Can see it, can see it. There.
Can you read now?
So it doesn't give them that option of one to two? Well, I kind of, I kind of agree with Greg. If we know we can't do it for one to two. Take it off. Take it off.
Right.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
I mean, we, we know right now we can't do it for that, so why have it on there? I mean, I think we've all said, we don't, we're either going to, we're either going to do it and it's going to be revenue neutral, or we're not. Is that not a true statement?
Right, in my opinion, if we're going to do it, we need to try and get, head towards revenue neutral.
And what was that dollar amount you gave them?
If the forward ish.
If you're going to neutral, if you're going to be revenue neutral on the entire program, you're probably between four to five bucks a month.
Yeah.
So would you be willing to pay four to six?
Yeah.
I mean, really, either yes or no, and if so, would you be willing to pay four to six? Because I think if you give them the option, right, they're going to pick the lower one. I mean, I would. So we wanted to take four, then? Huh?
Well, if it's four, two, six, I think it's just a range.
Right.
And then if the yes or no question, would you be willing to pay four or six, yes or no?
And it's, yeah, no other choices.
I think number two ought to be a yes or no question, if you wanted to pay four to six bucks a month.
What do you mean by subscription-based solid waste service?
So, many cities have subscription-based service so that you don't, you don't pay for a service all year long, then you don't use all year long. So, green waste, in December, you're probably not going to be generating green waste, so you won't need green waste service. But those that use that service pay for that service. So if, if you want a green waste cart to be able to put your grass and your leaves in it in the summertime when you mow your yard, which lots of people do, you subscribe to that service, and it costs, you pay for that service, that service totally generates its own revenue.
What's bulky item, cardboard?
No, well, no. So, another, another program that we've been asked lots of times to do is, for instance, your washing machine goes out over the weekend, you get another one, you've got the old one, what do you do with it? You don't have a pickup to go get it, to go drop it off somewhere, so you call the city, you give them 10 bucks, or 20 bucks, or five bucks, whatever it's used, whatever you may be. You put a sticker on it, city comes by and collects that, that appliance, that couch, that mattress and box springs, whatever it may be. Lots of places do that as well. And again, it's based, it pays for itself. If you're not subsidizing those subscription-based services, the people using it are paying for it.
How many 15-year-olds pay a water bill?
Yeah, how many 15-year-old had a house in the city?
I actually, I actually did that question, and I was trying to find a good demographic cohort, and to be honest, I didn't know where to put it, but.
You have to be 18 to sign up for service.
An 18 to 34 is a normal.
That doesn't mean though a 15-year-old won't find this in the mail and fill it out and throw it in. We could put 18, I don't have a problem with that, I was struggling with it myself.
I don't think that was, that was originally written either.
It was not, but I felt like.
It'd be nice if there was a way to kind of. I think it was edited. Reword that, if you'd be interested in the subscription-based solid waste service. I feel like there's some people that'll see that.
Yeah, I think there's some.
Wonder. That question can totally go away, we can just keep it two. I like the question. We can keep it really, really simple, and.
I think if you change that question, if you were wanting to make it the second one.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't know if we want to wordsmith this, that was a game a little bit being on here, but I would, I would appreciate, once you, would appreciate seeing, I did appreciate seeing it. The other thing, I guess, is, my only comment to this, and again, I'm not going to wordsmith it, is we want it to be pretty focused, and I don't, are we trying to find out more information than we really want to know on here, would be my question. Do we, at this point, are we trying to add cost to our recycle program by having subscription-based, or do we think subscription-based helps us with, follow what I'm saying, we really probably want to be pointed with, with this.
No, I think the, the original intent of that, those questions was that, as staff was contemplating the options, if we decided, if the commission decided, or as the powers may be, decided to discontinue the recycling program, what we were trying to do is gauge, does the public want to provide some other services to replace that, albeit at a cost, but if we're removing something, that wasn't necessarily the ideal approach either. So we wanted to replace it with something. So we can definitely remove those, it does, it may muddy the water a little bit, and we find out the initial answer on the. And we find out the initial answer on the, on the recycling, and then maybe we come back for that later. I mean, that's not a problem at all.
But I, I can see people saying, well, we just bought that great big huge truck. If you're not going to use it for recycling, what are you going to use?
We're still going to use it for trash.
Yeah.
There's nothing to keep it from being both compartments used for trash.
But you see what I'm saying?
Right.
People are going to say, you, you've got the equipment if you quit recycling.
Sure, and, and like, and like I said, subscription, a subscription-based service would allow us from November until March to use that truck, both compartments for trash. From March through the end of October, it would be used for trash on one side, green waste on the other, whatever it may be. It, we have the ability to do one of those programs if, if the people really want that.
You're talking leaves, you're not talking the end of October.
Well, at some point, you, you're going to have to stop it, but, um, yeah.
Okay.
But if we do discontinue recycling, all of the stuff that you would otherwise recycle would go to waste.
Right.
Right.
So the, the quantity of material that gets taken away from each house is going to be roughly the same, with some exception, but it's going to be pretty close.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I can see that raising, I mean, we're going to, we're going to get those questions of, well, okay, so I can't fit in one container, what's that mean? I mean, we're going to get into the weeds pretty quickly on questions about what happens if the recycle program goes away, because I can't fit it all in one sixty-four gallon deal. And that relates, that leads back actually to some more subscription-based for additional containers or something like that, if you would want to, I would think.
Well, at that point, if, if the, if the commission's desire was to not continue with curbside recycling at all, based on the survey, based on the information we get back, yes, we would have to go back and restructure how we, how we charge for trash currently, as we charge for it today. So you may, you may be able to fit everything in your one sixty-six gallon cart, sixty-four gallon cart. That may be fine. At my house, I can't do that because I still use my recycling cart. So if you take that service away, I'm either going to have to have a sixty-four gallon cart that I'm paying for for trash, or I'm going to have to go up, take a step up in trash and use the neighbor's four-year-old to pound it down in there and make it good and tight, because I don't have a four-year-old anymore. But I, I, I think that that would cause us to restructure that, and as we talked about Wednesday, that may be varying sizes of carts, maybe varying numbers of carts. And, and of course, there would, there would be different prices for different carts.
Do, do citizens have the op, option now of paying for two carts?
They do not. They have not had that option.
Okay.
Because that was the purpose of going with the sixty-four gallon cart when we switched to automated, was to not kill the recycling program.
Right.
By making it easy to throw everything in the trash.
And we've still got the orange bag.
And you've still got orange bags if you have that occasional bag of extra trash.
So I was wondering how you dealt with how the decision, uh, we've not had in our house for quite a while, but the, the, the issue of heavy trash weeks or whatever they.
Volume bags we sell. We still sell those at the office here.
So they, so the driver would then stop and get out and grab the bag and throw it in the truck.
Yeah.
When is this scheduled to go out? Is it supposed to mail?
My guess is as soon as you guys say that we have a good proof and we can, we can get them printed and, and go from there. So we'd make the corrections, send it out to y'all to get you to approve it.
Is it worth also asking the question, do you even recycle? Yes or no? Do we care?
I don't, I don't think I care.
Okay.
I mean, I think if you're going to take, we're going to know by that, we're going to know by that first question, if, if they, if they're willing to do it, if they're not willing to pay anything, then.
You could, that you could imply that, true. Okay. Any other questions or comments on, on this? Everybody comfortable with the changes we talked about before the survey goes out? All right, thanks. I guess I would encourage those who are watching tonight to, to spread the word, be, be ready for this little postcard to land in your mailbox, and, um, and I guess I'll at this time remind everybody that our contact information is on there. If you've got any questions or want to reach out to the commission, we are interested in your input as we talk about this. Thanks, Brad. Next item on our agenda would be, uh, the renewal of the neighborhood revitalization program on undeveloped lots. We spoke about this on Wednesday also. Any additional information from the staff on?
No, we're just asking you, this is, um, the time of the year, typically we look at that annual provision in our neighborhood revitalization plan that talks about new homes on previously undeveloped lots and new subdivisions. If, if there's a desire to extend that for another year, or as we spoke at the work session, another two years, because that's when our NRP, our current plan in its entirety is set to, um, close. And, um, so right now, currently, we have about ninety-eight residential properties in our NRP program, and of that, about forty-one of those are new homes and new subdivisions. So I'm just asking you guys to discuss this, this evening, and see if there's a will or desire to continue forward with this provision. If so, um, there is a resolution, and we'd ask you also to consider in our local agreement with the other taxing entities, which would be USD three seven five, USD four ninety, um, the college board of trustees, and Butler County Commissioners.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I guess I would just talk about this, I personally would like to see this go to two years. Knowing some of the planning that goes into doing a house, to, to do this every, every year means that whoever's making plans and making moves towards purchasing property and trying to do something in a fiscal year, starting September, you're in limbo through the, through the beginning of the year, hoping the commission does this again. So I, I would be in favor of it being a two-year rotation rather than a one-year. I think we've seen a lot of, a lot of good out of this. It's also something in, that doesn't cost the city anything. It just, it's deferred income. It's my opinion.
I'd agree. Would Vince, the only thing, Scott, do you think it'll be a harder sell at two years?
You know, that, that's been an item, I think, a selling point on this specific provision in, within your plan, is that annually, you all will take a look at it and determine if it's necessary to continue.
Even, even though, like Ben said, our, our big NRP program is going to close, and like you said, is going to close in two years, would it make sense to just say, okay, we're going to look at the whole program in two years?
Yeah, you could, I'm just relaying comments I've heard from those.
I just don't want to make your job harder when you go and talk to the other entities.
No, and I, and I think what's really helpful too is to have one of you all as a member of the commission there alongside staff, helping speak to these other elected officials. That has definitely helped as well.
As long, as long as you don't think it'd be detrimental to the program as a whole, I, I'd agree with the, with the two-year.
Well, and I think early, I, I think we all look forward to early in nineteen, us begin speaking in depth of what our plan for the next five years looks like as a whole anyway, and get all of those entities together, along with housing boards, planning commission, any number of group, realtors, builders, what have you, and talk about what we see out there and help us craft the next plan for the next five years.
I agree with that. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
What's your resolution number?
Twenty-eight fifty-five.
Twenty-eight fifty-five?
Uh-huh.
Now, it makes no difference whether a year or two, the two years will end up in the resolution.
Well, you just tell us.
Yes.
Expiration December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if we can get this done. I move to approve a resolution of twenty-eight fifty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an inter-local agreement with the Butler County Board of County Commissioners, Butler Community College, Unified School District four ninety, and Unified School District seventy, three seven five, to extend the re, neighborhood revitalization program for two years.
Second. Okay, it's been amended, it's been motioned second, and I guess my only comment is, should we say, instead of two years, should we say expiring December of nineteen? Would that be better than saying two years?
December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. I think we've all seen your head down on that.
Could you amend your motion as being December?
I will amend it to read November.
December.
December thirty-first.
December thirty-first of twenty-nineteen.
Thank you. Just a second there. Okay. All right, it's been moved in second. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries as five to zero. Thank you. Scott, let me know when you have those scheduled. I'd be happy to go.
Yes.
Enjoying you on those.
We will begin reaching out to those administrators getting them scheduled for the next available one.
And David, let me know when you have those scheduled, I'll go with you, either one. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda would be reports. Anything from the city commission or advisory board you wish to report tonight?
Uh, Parks and Rec met in October. Soccer and flight football came to an end, the end of October. Actually, that Saturday, the last Saturday in October, they canceled everything because it was just too cold for the kids, but they didn't bother to remake them up because they're getting ready for basketball. And basketball games start around Thanksgiving. We have a new administrative assistant in the Parks and Rec department, Andrea Conrad. Molly is doing a Parks and Rec video, promotion video for the parks and recreation that we have within the city, so she and Kevin are working on that. For those who may not have noticed, they filled the pool in at the country club. They've cleaned up around the clubhouse.
We don't have a country club anymore.
Do what?
We don't have a country club.
I'm sorry. Phil filled the pool. See, I'm old, and that's what it's always been to me. They filled the pool in at Prairie Trails, cleaned up around there, uh, and over the winter months, they'll be doing a lot more with the landscaping the staff is, and so they're hoping to make it much more appealing when you drive in. That's it on Parks and Rec. CBB has not met yet, and neither has Airport.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Kendra took all my Prairie Trails stuff.
Okay.
I don't have anything. I don't either.
Neither. It's the only report I have, is we've been, uh, been meeting with REAP as they go through strategic planning, and there's some initiatives coming out that I think are going to be really, really good, so, um, stay tuned for more of that. It is, it is, I still say, uh, thanks for the opportunity to be in the regional conversation. It's, it's enlightening, so that's all I have.
Oh, we do. We have an election tomorrow.
You know, you're right.
And we do have some contested races, so.
I thought you didn't have anything. I forgot about it. We do.
I didn't have anything from Prairie Trails.
And we have a parade coming up, Veterans Day.
That was Saturday.
That was last Saturday.
Okay. We did have.
I was with you on that. I got that mixed up in words.
Yes, thanks to all who came out to the parade, and, uh, don't forget to vote tomorrow all day long. And we do have, um, a contested race in the school board election. And I would say, uh, thanks in advance to the citizens. We don't have a contested race in the city commission, so. Didn't go without notice and appreciation, so thanks.
I got a question for Tabitha. What's the ordinance on chickens in this town? Are you allowed chickens?
You are. Um, Brad, I'm going to throw this to you.
No, no roosters.
I cannot pollute. No roosters.
No roosters.
Sex, how, what's the, what's the specific question?
Roosters.
Negative, no, you cannot have roosters in town.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
How many chickens can you have?
Two.
That is not true. It's six.
No matter what size your coop is?
Depending, uh, the, the maximum is six, and so you have to have so many square feet per, per bird. Excuse me?
For chickens?
I'm sorry?
For chickens?
Number of square foot per bird, yes.
There was a rooster that was crowing on Sunday, and I thought you could have both. It was just chickens.
Just, just the girls. No boys.
Okay.
If you think there's a rooster, you can call animal control. They'll go look.
Our city offices close Friday.
That's in my report.
Oh, all right.
All right.
I don't get in here.
Okay, uh, just a few things. We, K-Dot has recently put out a press release that the K-196 bridge replacements between Potwin and Whitewater has been delayed until late December. Just thought people would want to know that. Uh, the traveling public may use two fifty-four and I-135 as a detour, continuing to do that. Um, the city's online payment system has been experiencing problems lately. Staff's been trying to resolve the issue with the vendor. But until that is resolved, if citizens want to call in to make payments on their credit card, otherwise they can come into City Hall and, and we'll help them out on that. To Kendra's question, City Hall will be closed on Friday in observance of Veterans Day. However, trash service will operate as normal. And Nick did mention that election day is tomorrow. Citizens may call City Hall to determine their polling place. Uh, we'll help them out on that, and elections are going to be open from six AM to seven PM throughout town. And then one last thing, it's really a question, uh, going back to the recycling component. Does the commission want to do an incentive for those that fill out the survey or not? Just a question.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, just a question.
No.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the next item on our agenda would be executive session for attorney-client privileges. I need a motion to go into executive session. Do we, how much time do we think we need?
Initially, thirty minutes.
Okay, and that is? That would be, um, thirty minutes would put us at ten till. Knowing we usually take breaks in between here and the room, how about we just make? Is that really, it's almost seven thirty?
Yes.
Yes.
So we would reconvene at seven fifty-five.
Ready?
Ready.
Make a head start.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception under KSA seven five dash four three one nine B two to discuss pending legal matters and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting at seven fifty-five PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned to executive session.